Parker and I are trying, we're trying new camera angles for our reels, by the way, in our TikTok. Because we used to just be staring at the screen. So hopefully you like my background. You're getting an intimate view into my bedroom now, but.
And say both of you have your beds in the background. Yeah, it's nice.
Alright, let's do this thing. Elevation Nation. If you got a fire or perhaps a city ordinance that you need to talk to someone about, or you want to talk about traveling the world, we have a guy for you. Our latest elevator, Sam Rose, was connected to us by our close friends, Annie and Jared Miller, who met Sam abroad in Israel where they were working and teaching. And Annie reached out and said, you have to meet my friend, Sam Rose. He's an incredible person, a volunteer firefighter and a newly elected city councilman for Aspen, Colorado. We got a lot to talk about, Sam. Welcome to Elevation Nation. We are so excited to have you on the pod.
Thank you both so much. It's great to be on the pod.
Pumped to have you. Love Aspen, love Jared, love Annie, love Israel. We're going to talk plenty about amazing things. I'm curious, like Sam, what do you think it was that, you know, the reason why Jared and Annie was like, Sam, you should definitely have Sam on?
Well, Annie was my teaching partner in Israel and you know, every day I would just like hound her with all the podcasts I was listening to, all like political, all world news, all the stuff that was going on. Um, she's the best listener in the world. Jared's a lucky guy. And uh, yeah, I think she just like knew everything about me and I've had a different journey than others sometimes.
That's, she is a good listener and I think you certainly have had a different journey and we're going to unpack all of that. I'm excited for Elevation Nation to hear your unique perspective. You know, the coolest thing about having this show is we unite different people, not based on their careers or you know, the school they went to or the hobby that they have, but we unite every single elevator through their mindset. And you sir have an elevator mindset of trying to give back to the community and make the world a better place. Uh, a phrase that I think all of us are aware of is tikkun olum. Um, is something that we live by, which is, which is Hebrew and Sam, I think you embody that. And so I'm excited to get into that. But before we dive into all the amazing things that you do, this is Elevation Nation. Sam, we're going to put you on the hot seat. What is your elevator pitch? Who are you at your core?
At my core, I think I am a civil servant. I mean, people say good Samaritan. I'm just a guy that loves to do things for others, be adventurous and get involved. You know, like you said, I'm a city councilman in the city of Aspen, the honor of a lifetime right now. Um, I'm a volunteer firefighter. Um, I serve on like a state judicial district reviewing judges. I'm a response advocate for victims of sexual assault and domestic violence. Um, and just try to be a strong member in my community. I, I grew up in Vermont, um, very, you know, community oriented from there, went to the university of Denver. Uh, after graduation, you know, lived in Denver for a year with a bunch of close friends, thought life was too short. You know, bought around the world plane ticket as one does, traveled for a full year, um, much of it with my best friend. Uh, lived in Israel for a year and then took the great opportunity of moving to Aspen, thanks to the generosity of uh, someone from the Jewish community as well. So I've been here ever since, just trying to get as involved as possible.
So it sounds like you didn't really know what was going to happen post-college, but you knew that you wanted to make the world a better place. Is that right?
In many ways, yeah. Um, you know, I wrote some notes for this interview and one of the things that it's so Jewish centric sometimes, but one of the things I wanted to tell you guys the most was there's this Jewish riddle from like an old time about a guy walks into a village, he sees this wall of a bunch of like, you know, uh, targets with like direct hits on them. And then he's like, who, who did this? And he asked the guy, um, in the village, like he found the guy who did it. And he's like, how did you do it? This guy has like a broken arm, broken leg, whatever. He's very decrepit. And the whole story goes is he would, you know, do the sling, hit the wall and then draw the target around the circle. And I always feel like that's how I lived my life is uh, you know, I, I have goals and ambitions, but I feel like I just go in certain directions, something hits and I'm like, yeah, that's what I was aiming to do in the first place.
So I've never heard that. I liked that a lot.
That was the very abbreviated version. I should have just elongated that, but yeah.
That was beautiful.
Yeah. It's in a Jewish riddle book and I've always been like, felt like, yeah, that's how I live my life. Basically it's like, I have like targets, goals and ambitions, but you know, people early on were saying, say yes to everything, follow your passions and you, you never really know where you're gonna go when you just say yes to things and see what opportunities present themselves. And you're like, you know what? I meant to do that all along.
Hmm. Interesting. So you graduated college and you bought a round trip flight to go wherever I guess, around the world, right?
It's around the world plane ticket. Um, this is like the nerd in me is, so there's three different airline alliances in the world. There's Star Alliance, One World and Sky Team. Star Alliance is like united and you can buy around the world plane ticket, which is 16 flights um, on and 39,000 miles and you start and end in the same city. So I started and ended, you know, the ticket for being in London. It was a little over $4,000. And the glory of that is you can change the destinations and you can change the dates and sort of just like travel neumatically in some sort of way.
For $4,000, you can travel that much?
Yeah. Yeah. I feel like, you know, coming on this podcast and talking about that was like, it got me really excited because this was like four or five years ago now, but you know, I spent so much time planning this trip. We, I was gone for 10 and a half months. Bought around the world plane ticket. The whole idea initially was I was going to do something called Workaway, which is um, a different version of woofing, woofing, working on organic fruit farm, but Workaway is just volunteering anywhere for food and shelter. And it's just a website that people can use. There's a little pro tip for, you know, different elevators that maybe want to get uh, traveling for cheap. And initially it was just going to go to different destinations and volunteer. And it's sort of just like manifested itself into this just like much greater trip between the around the world plane ticket, work away, and just like all the other things I wanted to do. Um, I, I sort of like planned it by like basically writing a list and putting on a map of like all the places I wanted to travel to. And then I drew the lines to make it all happen. And I have like a photo of those lines and I think I went around the world circumference around like three times as far as how much I've bopped around.
I mean, could you off the head, like off the dome, give us some of the places you went? Maybe not in order. That would be tough.
No, I probably could do it in order. I was obsessed, but I mean, in, in the easiest way, it was just like, I did like Scandinavia first. I worked on an organic fruit farm in Norway for like a little over a month, which was like incredible. I was picking cherries and you know, mowing up fjords. And then, you know, bopped around Scandinavia, did UK Ireland, went down to Egypt, went down to like South Africa, did a little overland tour to like Victoria Falls, Zimbabwe through like Namibia and Botswana. Uh, I hiked Kilimanjaro. I went over to like India. That's where I met my friend Max. Um, and from there we did like Everest Base Camp, Southeast Asia, China, Japan, New Zealand for like three and a half months, Argentina for a month and a half, Bolivia for another couple of weeks and then like Panama and home. So basically every continent except for Antarctica, but we did go down to Ushuaia, which is like the launching point to Antarctica, but that was just not cost prohibitive.
So Sam, I gotta be honest with you. Parker and I compared to many of our friends are experienced travelers. We did China, Thailand and Vietnam. We did Europe and Iceland together. And we love to plan trips. You just made our trips look like chump change. That is some of the craziest 10 and a half months I've ever heard. I'm just, I'm so impressed. I think travel really is something that I know Parker and I are really passionate about because it unlocks a new perspective that I think you can't really get in our little shelter here in the United States. And so I'd love to dive a little bit more into some of the lessons you learned from traveling the world and experiencing new cultures. I can imagine you evolved as a human being from that.
Oh, definitely. I mean, that was the greatest experience of my life. I, I always feel like you have to have different goals for different times in your life and you know, every time I, it's like such a bad thing to compare sometimes between people, but also between times. And I don't think I'll ever have a better year than the year I was just like traveling with like friends. I mean, the, the greatest moments of my life were like living out of a tent for two months at a time, like in New Zealand with two friends. We bought like a tan, the board game. And we just literally like followed this like guidebook, which was a New Ze- New Zealand Bible, just going from like the next enchanted place to the next enchanted place. And I mean, yeah.
It's a great way to live life. I think, I'm not going to say this little story or riddle, but I think many have heard it about the man with the fishing boat. Um, in, in his country and how he uh, businessman comes in and says, you could do so much better and work harder. And then he's like, oh, my dream all along was just to be on a little fishing boat. And I think the coolest part about that, and I want to get into this more selfishly because I'm very curious on it and it's my podcast. So I'm going to get into what I want to get into. Um, I want to learn more about this working for food and shelter concept because let's be honest. We come from, you know, Jewish families where probably a normal nine to five job and being safe and secure is the norm. Thinking about this concept of, I'm not working for an end goal to retire or make more money, buy a Tesla, pay for a wedding, get a ri- right. The goal was, I am working to be here, to eat, to live, to sleep and to experience. And that's a very different shift than I think what many typical middle-class Americans strive for. What made you shift your mindset? And what were some of the big challenges that you faced with that new mindset?
Well, first off, I'm sure I'm not the first person to say on this podcast, but you know, you think life is too short. And through everything I've read and experienced, if you're gonna take leaps of faith, it's a lot easier to do them when you're younger. So um, I was very budgeted and very planned out as far as like what I had hoped to accomplish. And, and those workaways have a very kaput mentality to them, but it was the strangest thing in the world. Um, you know, three days into the trip, I did like Iceland before I did Norway. And in Norway, I'd been messaging this guy on the workaway website named Jan and they're Norwegian. So they don't really like talk all that much. So you're not getting much details out of them. And he picked me up off the ferry at like 11:00 PM at night, but it was still light out because it was July. And he just drove back to the farm and it was like, opened the door and it's like, you can stay in this room. And there was like his old daughter's room and it was like a trundle bed. And yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry, nerd, that, no, no.
Yeah, we got the echo going, Parker.
Cause your mic unplugged.
I'm loving this story.
I want to hear the rest. Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah. Cool. Nope. I think we're all good. Alright, so yeah, pull up. You know, uh, he opens the door. It's his like old daughter's room. He's like, you can stay here from now. I'm like, what time do I wake up? And he's like, uh, like 8:00 AM or something like, alright. So I throw my bags down, wake up the next morning. It's um, uh, the other people there are like a couple of like Spanish people, a girl from Denmark, like another couple of people from Switzerland. It's a really cool time in the morning and I mean, getting into that rhythm of just like joining someone's household, eating breakfast with them and uh, you know, being like, what are we going to do today? He's like, today we're gonna like mow. So I'm just like taking this lawnmower and just like literally going up and down like these fjord hills, like mowing his lawns between his apple orchards and I did like a lot of mowing for a couple of weeks and then I picked cherries for like the last week I was there. Fruit picking is very boring, but very beautiful view. And I mean, every day I would just like go out and hike or I'd read my book and there'd be porpoises, just like, you know, um, jumping out of the water in the fjord in front of me. Went to like Troll Tonga and like a side trip from there and just, I mean, that experience was incredible, but it was very, it was very weird. Um, but that was.
Are you working like for free or are they paying you?
Yeah. No, no, no money is exchanged. You work.
But they give you a place to stay.
Yeah. So you're sleeping in the house and you get like food. You see, eat the meals with them usually. Each one is different. Um, and for that, it's like a cultural exchange more than anything else. Um, and I would say to anyone listening, you probably should do it in like the more wealthy countries rather than like taking jobs away from someone in some other country, but like doing it in like Norway and the places I did felt like definitely right. And obviously did it with a bunch of other people from like Europe. And that was like a really cool experience to just like, I, I, I mean, the part that, you know, came back to me is I remember walking downstairs and the Spanish girl greeting me and she did the three kisses on the cheek. And I was like, oh, oh, and back for a third. And like, I guess I'm not in America anymore. Not going through that classic handshake.
That's insane. I mean, it's gotta be very, very eye-opening as a young adult to first of all, be able to travel to another country and accept the fact that you're there for a while. And this is your life and you're then welcoming yourself or someone else is welcoming you into their household and their lifestyle. And you just gotta go along with the flow. And I can't imagine the lesson that you've learned through that entire experience, traveling the world, meeting a ton of incredible people, sharing culture and values with each other. Um, so I can imagine also when you got back, you were like happy to be done or bummed that it was over?
I was definitely bummed that it was over, but when I got back from this trip, I just had the summer where I worked at the Jewish summer camp that I'd worked at previously. And then I went off and taught English in Israel with Jared and Annie. So.
So back in the international trap.
Yeah, yeah. I always felt like in my early twenties, I was like working off of two-year plans. And I mean, it made life a lot more enjoyable to know that what was ever coming next was going to be something I was going to be excited about. Gets a little more difficult as you get older, sort of, but I still try to keep that mentality of a two-year plan more than anything else.
Hmm. Interesting. I like that two-year plan.
Well, and by the way, Norway was just one. The other uh, places I did that was I worked on a farm in New Zealand. And this was with my friend Max and it was this old couple and we were helping rebuild their cottage, but we'd also tend to the horses and tend to the sheep and you know, um, that was like quite the experience with like basically like living with like not your grandparents and just like helping them out and the characters we got there. And then also did it in Bariloche, Argentina, where we were helping this guy rebuild an earthship, which is like basically a house out of all recycled materials. We didn't get as far as I would like, but I mean, we're talking about like rubber tires on the outside and like all these other recycled materials that like turn into this like really strange home right on the lake.
So I ha- I read this book, one of my favorite authors, his name's Michael Pollan. I don't know if you know him, Sam, but super cool guy. He, he's kind of like a journalist, but turns things into really cool books. Um, and I was reading one, it was talking about food, right? And all the different ways that in traditional society, back a couple of hundred years ago, how we made bread from scratch and first barbecued meat and fermented cheeses and stuff like this. And his whole experience was like diving into those with experts and trying to learn these skills. And he said, he felt like more human. That these things that kind of made us human and helped us grow and evolve, making our own food, making our own shelter, made him feel more whole. So I'm curious, as someone who sits in this desk, 10 to 11 hours a day and stares at a piece of technology, meeting with people across the world virtually, did you feel more, maybe human's the wrong word, but how did you feel getting your hands dirty and like learning actual skills and building real tangible things?
I mean, I think the only answer for that is I just felt alive, honestly. Um, the nerd, the nerd in me wants to be just like honest and tell you that a lot of the adventures I like to go on, I call Lord of the Rings style adventures. You know, and I mean, honestly, it was like going for a quest, having like a little goal, um, trying to, you know, just I think I heard you say on a previous podcast that you're doing it for the story sometimes. I mean, but those photos on Instagrams were my trophies, those experiences with my friends were like the best time ever. Um, and you, you talk about sitting at a desk for 10 or 11 hours. I mean, we had no responsibility. It was just like literally all for fun, all for the story, all for, you know, the memories and um, I couldn't even tell you where our biggest worry was honestly, when we were out there.
I love it. So I mean, you're back from your world travels. And you're back from Israel. You're living in the United States again. Uh, it seems like you're a lot more stationary now than in previous uh, years. So what brought you back and what have you been doing since? I know, you know, wearing that Aspen hat loud and proud. Um, and I'm sure like there was a probably a really cool story that led you to that.
In some ways, I mean, so after the traveling and after Israel, um, the summer in between those two, I was at that Jewish summer camp and one of the camp mothers there um, said, hey, do you want to move to Aspen and like live with me and my family like uh, now? And I was like, I'm gonna go to Israel, but I'll move in afterwards. Helped with the whole two-year plan thing. So the entire time I was in Israel, I knew I was probably going to move to Aspen afterwards. And when that time came around and I moved to Aspen, I mean, this is as close to feeling like life is just the complete vacation anyway, even when you are like working hard. And I was easing back into it. I had some really oddball jobs when I first moved here. Um, trying to get back into the working world, trying to become more professional. And I mean, I would tell you guys honestly that uh, ambition is the enemy of success because if I didn't want to have like a family and a home and all these different things, then I probably could have just traveled neumatically forever, but that never would have been fulfilling forever. So now that I'm in Aspen, I just wanted to get involved, become a part of this community, a place that I love because I can't imagine living where, anywhere else. And you know, I just finished my master's in finance degree. I was doing that online during COVID, the last couple of years and finished in December. Won the city council seat in March and honestly just got involved in as many community um, activities as I could. I, I almost feel like they're just like extracurriculars when you live here because the opportunity is just so crazy. Um, yeah, I feel like that, that's how I feel about this place, honestly.
So the full-time job is your councilman for?
No, well, right now, I, I will, this, this podcast comes at a funny time because I'm in a transition period. So I actually worked in the COVID relief effort for the last few years.
Very cool.
Last, for the last three years or for the two years, I was actually leading the contact tracing efforts in the county that Aspen's in. For the last year, I've been doing like data management work, you know, finishing my degree. Won the city council seat in March and have just been like kind of slow playing.
Gotcha.
I, I had to create a LinkedIn. I had to become more professional, um, working towards, you know, doing something in that finance world. And I still have to the end of this month until my job is up, but I'm in no rush.
Okay. Alright, sweet. I'm, listen, I love Aspen. Aspen is an incredible place and I'm very, very, very jealous of you. Um, it's just Colorado in general is a beautiful state. It's got the mountains, it's got beautiful winters, beautiful summers, lakes, animals, the food is incredible. Uh, and what I really liked about Aspen, and Sam, you won't know this because you weren't there, is that there's free Uber everywhere or something like that.
Right? You guys have like a free ride sharing service. And I'm like, what? This is crazy. What city has this?
That's the point. We're Aspen. Uh, it's called the downtowner. We also have like a we cycle program like many other cities have, but it's also free here. I feel like the idea of Aspen with all the wealth that comes into it, is it supposed to be all the good things about New York City, Washington DC, LA, Miami, Dallas, without all the stupid things about those cities. Um, and that's what our like downtown is supposed to be about. So that, that's why it is kind of like a special place to live. It's not an easy place to live sometimes. It definitely can be a sacrifice. Don't cry for me, but obviously it comes with its downsides too, as you can imagine, but uh, you know, looking out my window every day and you know, having like black bear, elk, moose, deer, like just like beautiful trees, like never, never puts a frown on my face. So I'm always happy here.
So one, one more thing, I know Sam wants to jump in. My other favorite thing that I learned when I was at Aspen is the trees in the mountains or something, the white trees, the white bark trees. Um, I, maybe you know the name is like.
Aspen trees.
The Aspen, they, it was mind blowing to me because two, two, of two facts. One is they're all connected underground, which basically makes them one giant tree. So the way we perceive the tree is that there's a bunch of different trees, but in reality, it's just one massive tree. And then the other really cool fun fact is that you can rub your hand on the bark and use it as a protective sunscreen or something for your skin. Um, which is really freaking cool too.
That second part is news to me, but the interconnected root system is like a big thing. Yeah.
So maybe someone gave me bullshit or not, maybe.
I'm gonna have to Google that one, honestly.
So Sam, you're getting real good insight into Parker's role when we traveled the world together, which is fact guy. Parker would always come up with certain facts about what we were seeing. So thank you, fact guy, for those two tidbits of knowledge. That was great. Sam, I wanna, I wanna dive into one cool thing. So Parker alluded to the hat on your head, but didn't describe what's on it. That's the fireman logo for the city of Aspen. And just wanted to, to talk a little bit about that and giving back to the community in that way. Um, my brother is, is a police officer in, in the state of Maryland. And so being a civil servant in that sense is uh, you know, something near and dear to my heart. And you know, he has his reasons for joining the force and why he wanted to try to, to make people feel safe and, and comfortable and, and give police a better name. I'm curious why for, for you, you were, you were drawn to be in a volunteer fireman out in Aspen?
Well, for starters, I think it goes to the mentality that I've just had my entire life, but then also back to the, the riddle I told you earlier about like, sometimes you hit the target and you'd be like, I meant to do that all along. When I moved to Aspen, I had no idea how long I was going to stay, what I was going to do. And when I was riding my bike to work every day, I'd ride by the Aspen Volunteer Fire Department. And it was like volunteer, okay, maybe I can do that. You know, uh, put an application, go through the process. Um, and it, it's definitely the, my favorite thing that I do here, honestly. And we're right in the heart of downtown. We kind of like host all the big events, especially the Fourth of July parade, which I think is like just about everyone's favorite like big event in Aspen in some ways. And the things I've been able to do to get back because of it, um, you know, I'm a firefighter EMT, so I've been on like CPR and progress calls. Um, and being able to put your hands on someone's chest and resuscitate them, that's happened once for me. And that was probably one of the most rewarding and like coolest experience I've had. And um, you know, going out to those wildfires, which I mean, serendipitous to what you guys are dealing with now on the East Coast, but you know, that's something that we prepare for every year around here. And then just being, you know, a member, a strong member of the community and like, you know, helping the citizens in any way we can. We get called, called to a lot of very strange calls, but everyone's always so appreciative. So it, it is just like one of the best and coolest ways I could give back, especially in a place like this where there is a volunteer department.
So what does like the typical day look like as a fireman? Or like, is it, you're, you're kind of reactive to certain situations or do you check in at the firehouse like once a week? Like, how does that work?
That's a good question as far as being a volunteer goes, because we're a combination department now. So we do have some like full-time staff. But as a volun- as a volunteer, we um, do at least one 24 hour shift a month. And we're supposed to respond to at least 25% of all the all calls that come in. And an all call would be like um, a fire, um, a car accident, a gas leak and, or like an echo medical call of like someone that is literally unconscious, not breathing. Um, so 25% of all those. And then we have like 36 training hours that we're supposed to do every year to keep our credentials up and keep our um, you know, skill crafted. Um, but that, that's sort of the life of volunteer. I, I definitely hang out there all the time because it's just like my favorite place to be, but that, that's sort of at least the minimal credentials or requirements.
So cool. I'm not going to lie. Like in my mind as a little kid, I'm like, oh my God, that's so sick. Like Sam got to play on the fire truck. That's wild. I can imagine your training was pretty, pretty intense to, to be trusted with saving lives and you know, an EMT is, is half of it with, with being a fireman. Could you tell us a quick story of some of the, one of the craziest things that, that you went through in training?
I think uh, just going into like a search and rescue building is the one that always sticks out to me where they like, you know, it's obviously a very safe environment because we're talking about training here, but like, you know, they fog the place up. So you can't see your fingers in front of your eyes. And you need to like follow the walls and like go through all these different compartments to like take this like dummy body out of the building. So when you're just like going through and like, you know, fumbling around everything, trying to communicate with everyone else, it's just absolute chaos. And I don't know. It's just one of those like funny things where you finally get out and you're like, I don't even know what just happened.
I feel like that's the equivalent of like police officers getting pepper sprayed and having to do an obstacle course. It's like, you can't see anything in front of you. Just run, figure it out. Trust your instincts.
Is that like every state, a police officer have to do that or is it only certain places?
I don't know. I know my brother did.
That's a crazy thing.
Crazy stuff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I would ever want to do that. I guess if, if you want to be a police officer, you got to do it.
Yeah. I don't think anyone wants to do it, Parker. I think it's just, it's something that you have to do.
Fair enough. No, you're right. No one's saying, hey, I want to raise my hand and get pepper sprayed.
I sure hope not. Alright, Sam. So we talked a lot about your travel. We talked a little bit about being a volunteer fireman. But there are so many other ways that you are giving back to the world, giving back to your community, providing tikkun olum to everyone. And so the other one I, I want to call out, it's unique. You're an elected city councilman. You said you got elected in March. Like you weren't busy doing other things with your job and studying and volunteering. One, how the heck did you come up with the idea to run for city council? And two, what did that election process look like? I can imagine like grassroots efforts take a lot of time and effort.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's uh, it's still very surreal to me, honestly. Um, and you know, it all started actually a few years ago because I actually ran in the previous election back in 2021 and I came in fourth of eighth. Um, and you know, I always knew I loved politics, especially local politics. And I think the motivation really comes from my dad. And I think the motivation really comes from my dad, who was on city council where I grew up for twenty years. But also just like Ask Annie and all the podcasts I would listen to and what I was talking about, it's always just been like right up my alley as far as interests go. And then I think, you know, as far as like Takuna Lum and helping, you know, repair the world, where else can you help repair and have a meaningful impact in your local community? So like city council is as like close to the nuts and bolts as it gets as far as getting to talk to everyone and sort of like come up with the best solutions to fix the problems right in front of your face. So as far as the election process goes, you know, it's not that hard to get on the ballot necessarily. You you get a petition and you need just twenty-five signatures. But it was very grassroots. Um, I I worked as hard as I've worked on anything to get elected this time around. Um, was very strategic. I I knocked on, I think, every door in Aspen and left a flyer and, you know, was uh participated in debates, um, you know, met with as many stakeholders as I possibly could, people that I considered to be the movers and shakers of this community. Um, and really just took a headfirst dive into every issue here, because I've only lived here for four years and this is a community that uh, really loves to talk about who and what is a local. Um, so four years is kind of a tough one to, you know, get over that hump, but I I was as ecstatic as anything uh when the results came in. I got um eighty-three percent of the vote. So you know, quite the Band-Aid there and um respect from that. And you know, being on it for the last couple of months has been just uh like I said, surreal. And we're talking about, um, you know, yesterday's meeting, we talked about four hundred million dollar housing project. We're talking about like rebuilding a bridge on the entrance into town. We're talking about like fixing the permitting process, so um uh, there's not as many holes in the ground and local businesses can return. So i- i- it's it's really, really just the greatest thing I've ever been involved with.
I want to just highlight one quick thing before Parker jumps in, because Sam, you you mentioned this earlier, a kind of comparing your life to Lord of the Rings and having a bunch of little quests, right? And I chuckled when you first said that. It now is so crystal clear to me that that is exactly how you were living your life. There are these little tiny quests and missions. Sometimes you maybe planned out the target in advance and hit it. And other times, you just swung for the fences and then made the target appear around it. And I I'm really just trying to harp on this point, because I need to hear this myself. A lot of times we get bogged down in in corporate America and societal expectations of here are the life events that take years, decades to get all your time and energy. And and sure, those are big quests, right? Retirement, buying a home, of course, like you want to do those things. But life is so much more fun if you can get some quick wins, some tiny little things that you can be passionate about and go after that help you live life. And I think you certainly are doing a ton of cool little quests and following your dreams and and I just, I commend you for that, man. It's it's really cool.
I I appreciate that ton. I mean, I really do think like happiness in life sometimes is just setting tangible goals and accomplishing them and like I said earlier, like different goals for different times in life. I can't travel forever. I hope travel is always a part of my life, but you know, winning that city council seat was maybe better or equivalent to being on top of Kilimanjaro. I mean, it it really is that special.
That's perspective right there, elevation nation. Certainly is. Um, you know, Sam, I asked this question to elevators throughout the podcast over the last couple of years, and I'm curious what your take is on it. Uh, you know, we've been talking a lot about your travels abroad, your uh the way you're giving back to the Aspen community, the way you've given back to other communities around the world. Uh, what's next for you, which is really exciting? But I also like to ask, what what is something that has been a challenge for you recently? What has been a struggle and what have you been doing to try to alleviate that challenge?
I mean, honestly, you know, I think everything is an opportunity cost, so everything I did was in place of doing something else, as we all learn and I I would be honest, like two big categories that have been, you know, not not terrible, but not perfect. And that's, I feel like I'm behind on relationships and careers sometimes. So for how happy I am and how wonderful life is going, those are things, those are pursuits that I definitely feel like I need to catch up on, because in the long term, I think that's what a lot of people work hard for. Obviously, and that's what is gonna, you know, hopefully make me happy for decades to come. And a lot of things I feel like I have done will lead towards, you know, finding the right career and finding the right person. So I find a lot of comfort in that. But it's definitely been put in the back burner as I ran for city council, as I traveled and as I um, you know, volunteered. So it's it's not always the easiest.
It, I, it's funny, because I actually mentioned this to someone else today, um, about our, what what Sam and my mentor, Rich Keller, said to us one time. I forget when he said it. He says, you can have it all, but you can't have it all at once. And it was so much perspective to me. And it's like, you know, there's so many different things in life that we focus on, whether it's work, job, relationships, love, health, whatever it may be. But if you tried to focus on all of them at the same time and put all of your eggs in all in one bat, in that basket at the same time, you're gonna get, eh, you might not get it all. You know, it's just, it's gonna be difficult. Uh, but I think in the long run, as you continue to focus and hone in on those goals and those things that, you know, you enjoy in your life, then it will all happen and fall into place. No worries.
Sorry about that. You know, as far as my uh, you know, moving on life, I just got a new English Bulldog puppy who was just parking in the background, so you know, try to prepare for this, but she heard noise, so sorry about that.
That's okay.
I love it. That's awesome. I wish you could bring her, bring her up, or is it a boy? You know, bring it on the camera, show elevation nation.
Oh, I'll bring her up.
Hell yeah.
Happy, one second.
Oh, stop it, Sam.
Oh. Elevation Asia, if you're listening, we're on YouTube. Sam's new puppy. So pop over to the YouTube, you can see the new puppy. She's so cute.
You see the barking in the background, the puppy come on, but you know, that's life. I mean, that was a, that was a reward I gave myself after weighing the city council race. As soon as life became subtle enough, I said I was gonna get a puppy, specifically an English Bulldog and made that dream come true. And it's been a different experience, because it's the first dog I've ever had, but um, she's the best.
It's incredible. And you know, to your point of feeling a little bit behind on some things, Sam, whether it's relationships or career or even travel, right? We all are on this journey of life and going at different paces. And sometimes we, it's so easy to compare ourselves to others and think that we're behind or ahead, but everyone is on a different timeline. And whenever we feel behind, think about all the other things that we are able to do that our friends who maybe are progressing in their careers and didn't travel or got in a relationship and then don't have as much time to volunteer, right? There are always trade-offs for these things. And I think it's easy to compare ourselves to each other and the people we feel are successful. But that's why I appreciate you coming on the podcast, Sam, and sharing your story, because you are really successful. And there are a lot of elevators out there who are listening to this, saying, Sam's got it figured out. And you know, maybe I don't have the relationship piece, or I'm still trying a few different jobs, but Sam could do it and and look how how successful he is. And so I appreciate you kind of shedding that light and and opening up with us and hopefully uh elevation nation hears that perspective and appreciates it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just to repeat, it's like the grass is always greener on the other side and I've always, you know, taken the positive outlook that the things I do now will make me happier in my career later on and happier in my relationships later on. I never want to like fall into a certain cliche where I turn to like my boss or to my significant other and be like, I never actually really lived. I'm really upset right now. And it's just like, that's not something that's gonna happen. So it's gonna be like, alright, life is different now, new goals, new pursuits and um, I'm really happy with the things I checked off my bucket list earlier on in life.
Alright, I love that. So let's go to our rapid fire section, Sammy. I guess both of you are Sammy. So let's do it. Uh, rapid fire, you traveled all over the world. You've been many, 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 many places. You've probably had many, 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 many different types of food. What is the one food that like stuck out to you and you're like, wow?
I'm mad. I feel like um, I have to go to Argentina, honestly. And it's because I'm not a vegetarian and they eat so much meat there. But like when I was on that workaway program, we were rebuilding the earth shift. We did uh asado all the time and the quincho. And I'm a huge gringo, so I really enjoyed like saying the words wrong, but the food there, the spices we used on the meats, the slow cooking of them in these like, like giant clay ovens was like the most incredible, like mind-blowing like taste that I like ever had. And we did that just about every night. So it was, it was just an Argentinian barbecue party every night.
I'm hungry. It's dinner time. That just made my stomach grumble.
Some of that.
Love it. Okay. Next question. This might be like picking a favorite kid. Favorite country you've been to?
I mean, I get that asked all the time, but and I think my number one has to be New Zealand. Um, I studied abroad there. I lived there for three months afterwards. It really is so far away from all the stupidity of the world and is just actually the most beautiful place that you could ever set your eyes on. Um, but beyond that, uh, just like some other ones I would have to say are like Georgia, the country. I've been there for backcountry skiing and for some like hiking. Highly recommend the elevation nation as if sorry is that one goes. And then obviously Israel is just like near and dear to my heart in a very people, places and landscapes sort of ways. They, I don't think there's as as unique a country as Israel in this world.
Okay, got some on our list now. I mean, been to Israel. Argentina would be sick. New Zealand would be unbelievable. Georgia, um, I don't know anything about Georgia, but now that you say there's backcountry skiing, I'm like, okay, that sounds awesome.
Well, let me just say something real quick about Georgia and then Nepal are like the two countries in the world where you can like go backpacking, but you they're so sort of like out there that instead of having to like pack a tent, you just stay village to village with like different, you know, like host families as you go along.
Wow.
Between the, between the cultural experience and like the most beautiful scenery you've ever seen, like nothing is more adventurous and it's not even that difficult. You really don't need more than a day pack for a lot of these things.
People just take you in, like.
Well, I mean, they they host these guest houses. It's like, it's like their version of a hotel, I guess, but it's their home that they expanded upon, because it's like extra income for them. Georgia was the funniest one, because they like, you know, where I trek there is like secondary. So you really are just like staying in like someone's bedroom and they have just like pigs, literally like like wandering through the house. So.
Oh my God. Oh man, yeah, it sounds, that sounds wild. Um.
I mean, yeah.
Gotta have it some point. I mean, you only get to live one time. So I feel like, Sam, we're gonna go to Georgia at some point or Nepal. That'd be cool.
My parents moved to Georgia, just a different one, but I digress. Okay.
Fair enough. You've been to Georgia a lot. Um, so you mentioned it on the podcast. I'm curious, what is your definition of an Aspen local?
You know, I'm gonna be in trouble for this one, honestly. I feel, I feel like an Aspen local is not the number of years or anything like that, because I I think there's different degrees of local, like whether you were born here, whether you grew up here, graduated from the high school, but for me, an Aspen local is someone who just contributes to the community, community in a meaningful way. Um, and feels like Aspen is their home and feels like that sense of belonging because of what they do here. I feel like that that's what would make the most sense to me, is just a contribution level as far as it goes here, but it it's tough.
Alright, and just to prove you are an Aspen local, Sam, which we all know you are, you got over eighty percent of the vote on city council. Just want to make sure, what is the go-to restaurant that you gotta check out in Aspen?
God, I mean, that's one of the tough things about living here is they change all the time and a few of my favorites have gone away. And the one I'd love to got a shout out here, um, Big Rap is the number one as far as just like casual dining goes. Go get a rap there right near the gondola. And then my favorite actual restaurant here is a restaurant called Meat and Cheese, which is like a farm-to-table, like, you know, sharing boards, charcuterie and all these different things. And it's honestly like such an amazing atmosphere and like the food is to die for.
Oh man, I'm getting hungry. Definitely getting hungry. Um, alright, cool. Last question. We've been rapid firing for a little bit now. Sam and I love to read. We're always looking for new books. What is that book recommendation that you have for elevation nation?
Yeah, so I've been listening to the podcast, prepared for this question. I I think the easiest one is this one I hope no one said before called Geography of Bliss. And I feel like that would speak to elevation nation the most. It's by this uh author Eric Weiner, Weiner, whatever. Um, it's a guy goes to ten different countries and defines what happiness is in each country. Happiness is freedom in the Netherlands. Happiness is money in Qatar. Happiness is like measured in Bhutan. They literally have have like a happiness scale in that country. So i- it's a really inspiring book and it's something that I would highly recommend to anyone listening to this podcast, that's for sure.
Sam, does that sound familiar?
Can you?
Someone said before?
No, repeat that title one more time.
Uh, Geography of Bliss.
Alright, I'm adding it to my Goodreads. Bear with me.
Sam, that sounds familiar, doesn't it?
It does sound familiar. I um
As in?
I at one point was trying to write a book, Sam, um, where I asked uh, a hundred different people at a hundred different countries, different stages of their lives, what their meaning of happiness was, what their meaning of life was. Um, but I only got to like five people, but that's okay.
Well, it sounds like Eric Weiner did your homework for you.
Yeah, right?
Tremendous book.
Really? Sounds great. I'm, I feel like I I need to put this on the bookshelf and get to it. Um, and it's probably like, what, short story? Like, it's like chapter? Or is it kind of all brought together?
Each chapter is a country. He does ten different countries and it's it's a super easy read. And I think he'll just like blow through it so quickly, because you'd be captivated by like the differences between each country and the definition of what happiness is, honestly.
Hmm, I love that. That's a great, great book. Buying that right now. I'll have to report back, Sam. Um, cool. I love it. Alright, the big question. We ask every single person who joins elevation nation, what the phrase, the motto that they live their life by. We call that your mental motto at elevation nation. Sam's got a mental motto. I got a mental motto. Elevation nation members all have mental mottos, but Sam Rose, we would love for you to share your mental motto. The floor is yours.
Such a tough question, and especially when I feel like you go on a podcast like this, you want to be super profound, but I feel like the simple and elegant answer to me was focus on the things you can control. Uh, as soon as you start focusing on things you can't control, I think you start going crazy. When you do focus on the things you can control, like working hard, like setting tangible goals, like understanding, um, you know, direction you want to be headed in, like understanding that certain people are not gonna behave the way that you expect them to. Then, you know, you can sort of like live life in a more carefree and hardworking manner that just like, you know, gets you somewhere and makes you the happiest you can be. So that's gotta be mine.
And go on more quests.
Always more Lord of the Rings quests, honestly. You know, it makes life a little more exciting and uh God, you know, when you start checking some of those boxes and going out to some of those more beautiful places, like what could make you happier, honestly?
And I know your puppy agrees. Beautiful.
We got an agreement there from a fourth uh member of this podcast.
Yeah, tell him both.
I love it. Sam, this was incredible. I know I was really excited to talk to you. I didn't know which direction we were gonna dive into, whether it was travel or city council or fireman. I'm glad we hit on everything. Thank you for opening up to elevation nation and sharing with us your journey. I I know you probably know this, but you've had a really incredible life so far, man. And I can only imagine the ways you're gonna elevate yourself and the city of Aspen moving forward.
Well, thank you so much. It's really an honor to be on this podcast. You know, having listened to it for at least the last month, I know I'll be a lifelong listener now and I yeah, I put it back on both of you that I can't wait to see where this podcast go and listen to more of the stories that you guys are gonna tell.
I appreciate you. Love it. I'm honestly inspired by you, Sam. Um, you know, I I work in government consulting. And I just, to hear stories like you and the things that you're doing and it just makes me like, give that, get this perspective, like, wow, there's unbelievable people out there making the world a better place and we're so appreciative of people like you. And we're so appreciative to have you in the nation now. Uh, because that certainly will not end the conversation between all of us. It just started. Um, so yeah, welcome. We're pumped.
Proud to be here. Thank you, guys.
Elevation nation. Until next week. Peace.